Okay, we're going to break this down then. And do the questions. Thank God for reading the order. My name is Josh, I'm the town moderator. Welcome everyone. If you are a registered voter, please proceed over to the supervisor's new checklist and make sure you get your voter card. And we'll remind people of the delay of arrival. Basically, today we'd like to have a brief meeting. We have two articles on the agenda. I think the idea is to stick with the rules we used in the past. So if you'd like to speak on either issue, we'd ask you to queue up over there. Other than that, if you have any questions on the proceedings today, feel free to get my attention and raise the issues. Okay? Everybody good? We're ready to get started?
Yes.
Cool. All right. To the inhabitants of the town of Dorchester and the county of Grafton and said state, qualify to vote in town affairs. You are hereby identified to be to the town hall and said Dorchester in on Saturday, the 27th of June 2015, with actions on Article 1 and 2 to be taken commencing at 10 o'clock in the morning. Article 1, are you in favor of ratifying the votes of the March 14th, 2015 town meeting on Articles 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11, which action is necessary due to an inadvertent failure to post a certified copy of the budget with the warrant for the meeting as required by Would anyone like to put this article on the floor? Sherman, is there a second? Maria, would you folks like to speak on this issue?
I'll speak. There's not much, not much to say because that was, the warrant article explains it all. We failed to put the, to post the MS 636, which is the certified copy of the budget. Of course, we, of course, we voted on the budget, everybody knows what the budget is. So what was lacking was what we estimated to be the revenues that we would take in this year. So that's not a big thing, it's pretty much the same every year. But DRA thinks that if perhaps somebody here had known what we expected to take in in revenue, it might have changed our vote on some of the warrant articles, the money warrant articles. So we have the MS 636, they filled it out, and we are expecting to take in $123,968 of revenue. We call it other revenue, revenue other than the property tax revenue. So that's about it.
Would anyone else like to speak on this issue? Okay. I think we should then proceed with the vote. I think we'll just use our voter registration cards? Or why don't we just go with a voice vote? I don't think I'm listening. Everyone in favor of passing Article 1? Well, thanks, I, we need to get it to that stage. So if somebody could make a motion to call the vote, call a question?
Make a motion, call it a question.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. I saw, okay, so we've done the procedural thing, I think we now proceed with a voice vote. All those in favor of Article 1, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you are opposed to Article 1, please signify by saying aye. Article 1 passes unanimously. All right, now proceed by reading Article number 2. Article 2, are you in favor of accepting the donation of land and buildings known as the Chiver Chapel at no cost to the town? Would someone like to put this article on the floor? Maria, is there a second? Steve, perfect. Okay, would you like to speak to this issue?
Previously, the owners of Chiver Chapel had been given a tax exemption by renting the church from the congregation. This year, DRA told us that that was not acceptable, that the congregation, to get an exemption, the congregation using the church would also have to own it. The owners of the church building have said that they will demolish it rather than pay taxes on it. They've offered to give it to the church, uh, to the, to the town. We just had Randy Latulip go to the building and kind of check it out. Stunningly, the foundation is, is amazingly, has been amazingly redone. I mean, a lot of work was put into it. The church must have been razed at some point. All the original stone foundations, been concreted, there's a concrete foundation on top of that. He is, the building itself, he said there are, there are really no major structural problems. There's a, there's a, you know, slight break in a soffit, there's a grip that he said can be fixed with little or no effort. The window is in need of repair. There's a beautiful bell there. He threw out a ballpark figure of five or $6,000. But again, as with the schoolhouse, the select board feels that the church is a prime candidate for a moose plate rent or an health chip rent, so there really, there shouldn't be any major costs incurred or planned. And it is a beautiful piece of Dorchester's history, and so, you know, the select board feels that this would be a beautiful thing for the town. It's, I don't know if there's any questions or any answer, or is this what happened?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Chris, why don't you, since you're elected official?
Is it five or $6,000 for like the window and stuff like that, or any general repairs?
No, that did, would not include the window, this was a ballpark.
Yeah.
This was not, but he thought, he was stunned at the excellent condition of the building, and he thought repairs were minor. So they did not include it.
Actually, now, you know, those election officials right there would like to go ahead and form to the line, if people have questions or need to organize in this area. I'm sorry for the format.
Hi, I'm Brenda S. My question is, is how often is the church used? Was it, is it used four?
It's used every Sunday by the Apostolic Lighthouse United Pentecostal Congregation. The pastor was at a board meeting, two board meetings ago, answered some questions. The congregation, past congregation has put a relatively new roof on the church. They pay for the heating costs, there's no plumbing in the church, so they pay for the heat. They maintain the little yards that surround the church, and that would be, our thought is that that same arrangement would go forward.
That they would continue to pay the heating and?
Yes. There's not, the church is not heated, except when they're there. They have a little space here, and they're, they've got to sign up for it, they need a green Sunday till 10:00 p.m.
So they would continue status quo, and it would just be owned by, or, yeah, owned by the town?
That was, that was our thought, that everything would continue as it has been.
I'm just checking back with some questions that were brought up at the hearing, and if I could, there are not four of them, but they're fairly simple, so if you could check. We were told at the hearing that a survey would be done, has one been done?
Of that, of that question? No, no, because we wanted to wait for the vote. Why would we, why would we survey the vote?
Well, the main problem for that is that the, on the tax list, the buildings, the building is listed, it says zero acres, so it sounds still as though the land does not go with the building, and I think that should be clarified.
Okay, well, the Duquettes had said that that, that, it's, it's a verb, there's nothing in writing, but they had said that that, that yard, which is quite well delineated, would, they would give that to the town as well.
But nothing's in writing?
Nothing is in writing.
Article stipulates no cost, we've talked about some of the maintenance issue, is there a lease agreement yet with the Apostolic Lighthouse concerning maintenance issues?
There is none, but we would have the town attorney draw something up that would include that.
And would you define maintenance? Maintenance has several definitions according to the RSA's, some referring to repair, and some referring to paint, that sort of thing, so.
And that would be, again, our retained, and maintenance as, not repair, but, but, well, we could define that, and that could, you know, we could alter that definition. But they, they have kept up with maintaining the yard, they did maintenance, they put the roof on, so that's, that, that is repair. But that could be defined.
Did you yet receive an opinion from the, the attorney? You were told that that would happen as well, about the whole issue?
Well, and she's, well, we, we did have a, a conference call with her, she did, you know, she sees no problem, but again, nothing is in writing, because we assumed the vote should come first.
And I know one of the selectmen brought up the question of separation of church and state, was that brought up at the conference call?
No, it wasn't.
I guess my main issue is that there are too many variables that we don't understand and don't know yet, and to accept a property when we have other properties as well, none of, some of which are not maintained, could be an issue, so I think that's a serious problem. I would prefer to see this having been brought up at the regular town meeting, so we'd have, you know, a greater number of people who could, could discuss it, and I would like to make a motion, if this is a good time for that, that we postpone this article until the March 14th, I think it is, town meeting of 2016, second Tuesday of the month.
Well, as far as that, this just came up, and as, again, the Duquettes have said they will demolish the building rather than pay taxes on it. Now, whether that was just something they said, or something they would actually do, I don't know.
People could donate the cost of the taxes, $300 and something, so.
I believe I have a motion on the floor.
Right, thank you.
And so the motion is, do you read the motion?
The motion is to postpone this article until the March, I haven't got it exactly, 14th, 2016, town meeting, which is the second Tuesday of March.
I'm not sure it's necessarily, I understand the verbal intent. Is there a second to that? Am I second to that? Is it second? Okay, we have discussion now on that particular motion. So motion, the motion has been made to postpone, so let's, let's limit the discussion to whether we should postpone this article. Okay, we could have to queue, and one at a time, address this particular issue.
I'd just like to support my, my right official, I think there's a lot of unanswered answers, questions that need to be answered, and between now and 2016, I think that could be done. The other thing I'd like to bring up is the fact that Arthur Lapper, a congressman of Ronald Reagan, quoted as saying, "Increase spending will have a multiplier effect, and increased spending for, we have an issue possibly in the future, maintenance, the maintenance for this building, it will come to bite us in some way."
Yes, I would say if we do pass this motion, we should probably call a, that stipulates these sorts of questions that were asked, that were unpartially answered, should be answered before the March meeting. So if we pass this motion, somebody should offer that. If we can't, more or less, you know, we can, we can act on this particular article, but we can't do much more than that at this meeting. I guess we should agree.
Plot Green, just a note, the town is being offered a pretty phenomenal gift, a gift of a building and land that goes to the heritage of Dorchester. And by postponing it, we could be jeopardizing that heritage, this, on the town of Dorchester. So I would recommend not postponing a fabulous gift such as this. As far as the maintenance cost, the maintenance cost in a lease agreement can be detailed explicitly, as we've worked on with the Dorchester Historical Society, so that can be covered, so there is not a cost to the town. So that maintenance can be not just stained glass improvements, but it can be painting and other things as well.
So it looks like already people are making their way up. At this juncture, would you like to address this?
Well, I, I was just gonna say, if a cost is the major concern, I think the original motion could be changed to, the town will, would the town accept the donation if it stipulates that maintenance costs are not to be raised through taxation, which means that then the church would be maintained through grants and donations? I mean, that would be another way to enable us to act now and assure residents that that cost would be raised through taxation.
All right. First, there, the history of the, the building, it's really not, it was considered, I believe, a Sunday school, so the preface of calling it a church because it has its steeple, believe it or not, is not particularly germane to this, because any building can look like a church, it's not church, but it really has nothing to do with the gift. We've been trying for quite a while to raise money to fix the stained glass window, and we've been blocked because it's a private building, and the town, we can't get grants for it, as we did for the schoolhouse. As far as, so that would be a real plus, because it's really the first thing we see when we commit the town from that direction, to keep it as pristine as it is, and we really gotta fix that stained glass window, and the other windows on the side. So this would be a great opportunity for us, as we did with the schoolhouse, because there is money available to us, but we can't apply for it until we own it. So if the town owns it, the money falls anyways, which the church, the current occupants of the church, nor the landlord can afford to fix the glass window. Secondly, there was, in researching the church, apparently many years ago, and in talking to one of the residents, there was a survey done by a Mr. French for that piece of property. He is since deceased, and his son could not find, or hasn't got back to us with the survey that was done. And this is only for memory, and I don't, but, okay, I believe many, many tax maps ago, that little section was separated, and when they did the merger, became one piece, and some of the older residents thought that that was a separate piece of property that was donated or purchased by the family, who are now deceased, that donated. And then when Mrs. McDonald died, when the church was built, so did the history, and a lot of those records from the church are in the possession of a non-resident, which would certainly help the Historical Society in town, and pretty much the Heritage Commission, to get those records back, redo the stained glass window, but the beauty to this, it's a gift. Now, Brenda can't afford the taxes, and there was a lease, because DRA, three years ago, said we are not giving you a tax, we cannot give them a tax exemption, because they want a lease between the landowner and the church that are renting it, to show that it's being used, it's the use of the building. That's how it looks, as we have other buildings that look like a church, but the tax exemption is as it being used as a church. DRA made us correctly have the pastor, who we checked out to make sure they're a qualified religious organization, and Brenda have a lease to comply with DRA. They did. Apparently, as time has gone on, we continue to try to get money for the church, for the building, and I don't want to use the word church, because that could change tomorrow to be a residence, could be anything. But the, it was, it was a Sunday school, as one of the, one time residents had explained the history to me, and this was done years ago when we tried to fix the building. So the survey was never found, the resident did think that, they had all this done, they paid for it, but they never sent it off to payroll to be recorded. That was a problem. So the existing lease shows that Mrs. McDonald owns all that, and that building. Brenda didn't know that. So the tax exemption was really significant to her. Then, when they, he merged it, and I, I don't take that to the back, but somehow, this, that's one piece now, and Hadeet says it's one piece. So now she said, look, I'm not paying the taxes, I want yous to have it, preserve it. It's a line law adjustment is what we're talking about here. Go get money and fix it. The maintenance part, which should be a concern for the town, of who's gonna pay the electric and all that stuff, is the same rental lease agreement that you would draw up with any town. And if, for some reason, they leave, there isn't gonna be any utility cost of that, because nobody will be in there until the town decides what we want to do with it. But it's, it's a valuable, it's money to the town, it's an asset. The attorney was in, our town attorney was in on this four or five years ago, because we didn't want the building to start to deteriorate, to look bad, not painted, the roof, all that stuff. It turns out that the Reverend and his congregation, they're the ones that put on the roof. So the answer to, the answer for, those are, well, look, that's the history, what we did with, how the town started with the building, but the question now is, do we turn it down a different, if or not? And is it a negative or positive? And it's all positive, it's an asset, and it's a controllable asset. And it was really DRA that threw the town curveball, was the other one that says, the Reverend should give a lease to Brenda, and this year they turned around and said, oh, wait a minute, they gotta own it. So now Brenda's standing there with, look, I've paid $3,000 in taxes, she says, I'm not paying this, I'm gonna tear it down. We can't, we can't let that happen. Don't let that happen. And whether you go to this meeting or a town meeting, this is, you're looking at a gift to us in the mouth, so why delay it? Why, let's get it over with, let's get it, let's get it all nailed down, and the cost does zip. That's it, that's the history.
All right, I think already you may have addressed, as far as part of figuring it out now, when you indicated that things like electricity and stuff would be null, if the lease was not, you know, flawed. But, as all assurances are not necessarily sure, if the lease falls, and we're not leasing it, and we can't use it, even though we may not be paying electricity, we will still have debts that accrue. So this factor in things in as to whether it could be a cost or not, it could be, doesn't mean it's not within our premises, it is, it is a nice gift, so, thank you.
Gavin Beazey, speaking of the motion that I'd look currently on the floor, about pushing the vote to the next town meeting, I don't think we should. Honestly, don't think we have substantially less people in this meeting than we had in the town meeting this year, if we first held, so kicking the can down the road, I don't see what purpose it's, purpose it serves.
I would just, Patricia Fons, like to state again that the amount of tax that is, would accrue would be around $359, $360. And if people would, I, I would really like to see a larger group vote on this issue in March of this coming year, and if people are concerned about that, concerned about the threat of the building being raised, they could simply privately raise monies to give to the landowners to pay those taxes, so the threat would not be followed up on. Thank you.
As a lot of you know, the chapel is near and dear to my heart. I have been in the chapel within the past year or so, and that stained glass, which is one of the biggest draws to that little chapel, was in a bad way initially, and it's in a worse way now. The bottom portion of it is actually imploding in. It is in dire need of help. The sooner we have this, the sooner we can work on getting some grant money to take care of that window. That little chapel is kind of the gateway to Dorchester when you're coming from Plymouth. We don't need another eyesore staring people in the face as they enter into town. The gift is a fantastic thing, and the sooner we accept it, the sooner the townspeople, whoever wants to get involved in getting grants and making sure that the lease is done properly. Pastor Howe has been fantastic. They have services there every Sunday afternoon, unless, of course, somebody really can't make it. He comes from Hudson just to do this. The congregation has grown from five people. I've seen all those cars, probably a lot of you have. I just really hope that we can vote on this now, so we can start working on it as a town to get it in shape. The pastor knew that they had to keep up whatever needed done in that little chapel, which is smaller than this room. They've done that. It looks beautiful, you walk inside, you still have the beautiful walls. They have replaced the chairs that were antique, I believe they're still there, but everything is basically the way it was. That glass needs doing, so I urge you to pass this vote now. Thank you.
All right, is there any further discussion on the postponement, the motion to postpone? Then I think we should proceed with a vote on whether or not we should postpone. Okay, does everyone understand at this juncture what we're voting on? If we're voting, yes, sir?
I'd like to say something to the reason why I voted for that.
Go, go right up, come right up.
I listened, everybody, and I've got nothing against the church itself, but I'd like to see more people here to vote on this.
I just, this is, we haven't been here the last few months, so just want to the select board a notification, just to clear my head, because sometimes you call a special meeting, there have been culprits, I'm told, in the past that we called a special meeting, hopefully only five people show up so they could get stuff scrubbed. That's obviously the case here. Did, was there a notification to everybody in town, like, and you had a public hearing and all that? We've, we've had all that?
Yes, we went through the process that we were given to go through.
Okay, so it was posted, we had a public hearing, the notification for this went out, and everybody in town got to work?
They had opportunity to get word, individuals. Individually, the postal cards were not mailed, but the...
The warrant was posted in the newspaper, also.
It is a newspaper. You know, whether somebody chooses to show up or not, I don't know why we're kicking down, why we're kicking this down the road. If there was a question of not, of the notification, then I would definitely agree with which. But it seems that they did it the right way. People want to show up, they show up.
I didn't know about this till yesterday.
Well, as long as...
And I'm sure that there are people that say...
We're just gonna have to be border, it's not back and forth, I'm sorry.
My question was, if they did it the right way, which?
This is just a quickie. At the hearing, we were told that, we were told that it would be put in the Penny Saver, but that that was a good idea. Was a notification put into the Penny Saver for this meeting? So which pa... I've looked through all the papers, and I haven't seen it anywhere.
Valium.
And you know when, can you recall when?
No.
Was it just one day in the paper?
I'm not sure.
For a special meeting, this is too late now, but obviously, it did not, the notification did not reach enough people. And that's one of the reasons, we probably have some stocks to tend to.
All right, just to do the postponement now, just trying to keep on track of what is going to postpone.
We were given a list by the town attorney of dates and requirements for notification, and that was filled into the letter. So that's what we did.
Cool question.
Okay, so the question's been called on this motion to postpone. Is there a second?
Second.
So the question's been called in second. We should proceed with a vote on whether to postpone or not? So you would vote yes if you choose to postpone, and you would vote no if you would like to continue on with this issue. Would that be article two? Is that clear to everyone?
Are you using?
Yes, why don't we?
Okay, so you can count that?
Sure, that sounds wonderful. Okay, so we use our voter cards? So when your church under votes, you would lift your voter card to be recognized, and then the supervisors will count those votes. So this vote, we should proceed with a vote on the motion. Is everyone clear on what we're doing right now? So if you would like to postpone this article until the town meeting in 2016, March of 2016, then you would vote yes right now, and raise your voter card.
Four, five.
Five, two. Okay, if you are opposed to the postponement, and you would like to proceed with a vote on article two, would you raise your voter card?
Do you need a second?
It would be a good idea for record.
Nine. Fourteen.
I think we should do this. Fifteen total? All right, article two is back on the floor. Is there further discussion on article two?
Oh, I guess it's for the first.
Are we done? Would you like to discuss article two, Virginia?
I know this one was waiting to hear from the lawyer as far as, but if the town takes over the church, can we legally rent that church, sign a lease with the members of the congregation and collect that grant from them? Can we leave, is it, I know you... I understand the question. Can we do that? Can the town do that? Can you answer that?
Yes. So the question is, is it legal for the town to sign a lease and obtain funds from this church organization? And the select board, do you have an opinion or an answer on that?
The answer would be yes, but that's not what we're intenting to go.
No, and I understand that term, but I know that was a question that was brought up. I'm just, you know, when they say separation of churches, I'm just, I'm just trying to bring it on that. It's a beautiful building, and I know, I remember the Heritage Commission, we've been discussing the window for a long time. We'd like to see something really done with it. And I know this one's available, but it has belonged to the town in order for us to apply for any kind of a grant or anything to get it repaired, so. It is a beautiful building, so. I would like to see it. I just wonder if we would be, if you were going to grant it, if you're gonna sign a lease with the congregation, would we be okay with that, that somebody is gonna come back and say, "You know, you can't do that afterwards." Do you know what I'm saying?
I do, yes, yes. Yes, we can do that.
Okay.
I have two questions, ladies. It's probably understanding that if there was an issue with separation of churches, he, the town lawyer, would have absolutely been pretty early on in discussion? Is that what an issue?
I feel pretty certain that we did ask her a question.
We're not sponsoring any kind of religion. And if we were to tell the church that they couldn't rent the building, we would be discriminating against them. We would be the ones, you know, that would be acting unlawful. That would be discrimination.
My other question was, Maria mentioned amending the article in order to make it so that funds would only be raised through grants and other fundraising measures. Is that something that we could make an amendment to that? Is that good for me?
All right. Are you asking me the legal responsibility?
Yes, I guess.
What we cannot do is to change the intention of the article, or we cannot increase any revenues to be expended. I know that for a fact. As to the legality of any particular amendment, I'm not a lawyer.
Okay. I don't want to move out of that second answer. Would you have mentioned maybe being able to do that? Maybe it would be used hack money? So I don't know if that's something we want to look at, to make amendments to or not.
And I don't know the legality of it, but it seems to me if it was worded, does the town choose to accept the donation of land in the church with the stipulation that maintenance costs will not be raised through taxation? I don't see as that changes the intent, because the overall intent of the vote is, are we accepting this offer or aren't? So that would, but I am also not a lawyer, so.
Yeah, would you like to speak?
Yeah, a question to the secretary. If the town votes to take the property, is there any plan or any thought that if the congregation rejects the terms of the rent, they're able to do that? So we get the church, and the congregation says no to requirements for maintenance, what would be our, is that thought ever come across your guys' mind?
Well, we did speak with the pastor, and, you know, our intent was that the lease with the town would be the lease that is presently in place, which has the congregation paying for the utilities. And again, nothing is in writing, but the pastor had, you know, was pleased to know that the town would offer the same lease requirements that the Duquette's offering presently.
If we accept the property in the building, the key thing is property and building. There is no, it is not owned by the town. There is no property tax issue. It's a tax exempt piece of property, owned by the town. Don't get held up on the word church, because it's the use of the building. The building could be used for anything by the town. And the town does not have to lease it to the congregation. The town does not have to do anything with that building. It has now become a valuable asset to the town to dispose of or maintain as the town chooses in the future. It is not a church, it is a building. That is the key. The lease agreement is, the one right now with Brenda was a good lease, because we reviewed it, or else we wouldn't have given the tax exemption, because the key is use. The select board now, through the town, has all the power, if you will, over that piece of property to make it beneficial for the town. Today, and don't look at just that congregation, look at it as in the future, as a piece of valuable property, and a valuable building. That's what the select board is accomplishing today. That's really good for the town.
Would anyone else like to speak regarding article two? Would you like to call a question?
I'll call a question.
Cookie, is there a second? All righty. Okay, I think we need to proceed with a vote today, folks. Two questions, if you guys can come up. I think we'll do this by voter card. All right, so we'll proceed with a vote on article two. So if you're going for yea, you are in favor of accepting the donation. Is everyone clear?
I have a question. Now, she mentioned as far as only being through grant money for the repairs. Is that a part of this in saying yes?
No. Currently, the article that has been called question and seconded, so we are on voting stage right now in terms of our procedure, there is no stipulations other than what is written. This is where we stand, we are just voting on what is written.
Is there an opportunity to amend it, so that it would say that?
That opportunity has already passed. Once the question has been called, that opportunity has passed. We need to proceed with a vote, or to follow the procedure. Yes, sir?
Question concerning about the grants?
I think as far as that is, probably after the meeting. We are really into the other part. Any questions on currently what's taking place here? Anything that needs to be resolved before we take the vote? I just want to make sure if there's any questions.
Since we don't have copies of the article, can you reread the article before we vote, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna reread the article, article number two. "Are you in favor of accepting the donation of land and buildings known as the Chiber Chapel at no cost to the town?" That is the article. So if you vote yea, you are in favor of that. If you vote no, you are postponed. Are we clear? Everybody ready? All right, let's proceed with a vote. Please raise your voter card if you are in favor of accepting the donation of land and buildings, known as the Chiber Chapel. Sean, you just count that side of the room. Chris, you just count that side of the room.
Seven.
I have ten, please.
Seven and ten, we're at seventeen. Three yes. Okay, we'll proceed with the no votes for article two. Please raise your voter card if you are not in favor.
I have four.
I see it's all four. Okay, ladies, and that article passes. At this juncture, we are at the conclusion of the town business. Is there any other thing, other discussion that we'd like to discuss? There's no...
Oh, should do a jerk.
There was a second. Make sure you return your voter cards. Stand right up. The motion has been seconded, the meeting is... Seconded, who seconded it?
I'll second it.
There was a bunch of them that seconded. There was a whole crowd of them, but I think certainly the show was high. All in favor of the...